Good evening, everyone. I want to call to order the York County School Board's work session to order. I think I've already said that. It is Monday, November the 9th, and we have quite a few things listed on our presentation this evening, so we're going to go and jump right into it. So, Dr. Shandor, you want to start us off?
Absolutely, Mr. Metford. Good evening, Board members. This evening, we have a few presentations for you. I'm going to ask Mr. Tony Vladu, Director of Secondary Instruction, to come to the podium. He's going to provide an update of our strategic plan regarding an objective under Goal 1, as it pertains to the percent of advanced studies diploma graduates that score a 15, 50, or higher on the SAT. He will then provide an update on two objectives under Goal 2 that relate to course development at the secondary level. Mr. Vladu?
Thank you. Good evening, Chairman Metford, members of the Board, and Dr. Shandor. During the October work session, I provided you with an update on the enrollment of our underrepresented students in middle school advanced classes, industry certification, and virtual learning. Tonight, I'll provide you with an update on three additional objectives under Goal 1 and Goal 2, as they relate to college and career readiness, our middle school advanced course experience, and the high-demand career field course at the high school level. Goal 1 of the strategic plan states that York County students will consistently demonstrate growth and excellence in the skills and knowledge needed to be productive citizens. One objective on the Goal 1 states that by FY '17, the number of advanced studies diploma graduates achieving the college and career standard on the SAT will increase four percentage points over and above the percentage earned in 2012. Before I begin to review our progress, I would like to take a moment to review this graph. The blue bars represent annual targets to meet this objective, while the green bars represent performance. Performance on this goal is measured by the percentage of students on target to earn the advanced studies diploma who earned a combined score of 15, 50 on the SAT for critical reading, mathematics, and writing sections. The 15, 50 score was selected because this level of performance indicates a 65% likelihood of achieving a B or higher during the first year of college. Tonight, I'm pleased to report that York County School Division students and teachers have made great progress on this goal. Despite national SAT performance trends, York County students earning the advanced studies diploma have exceeded FY '14 performance and the current year's target by eight percentage points. Although this is not an objective, I want to take a moment to show you the performance of our students as compared to national and state averages on the three components of the SAT test. As this graph shows, York County students outperformed national and state averages in reading, writing, and math. Also want to take a moment to share another measure that speaks to the college readiness of York County students. Like the SAT, the ACT is also accepted by all colleges for admission. Scores of 18 or higher in English, 22 or higher in math and reading, and 23 or higher in science predict a 50% likelihood of earning a B, or a 75% likelihood of earning a C in the corresponding course during the first year of college. Our results this school year show that York County graduates are notably better prepared to be successful during the first year of college. This concludes the college readiness objective update. Before I begin the next update, I want to open up this presentation for your questions and comments.
Any comments, questions?
This is just great news, and I know as we go into a retreat in January and set the course for the next four years, we've got to build on this and go higher and not go back. So, we have a challenge ahead of us.
It's very interesting to see the differences between the state and the nation on the SAT and the ACT. The ACT, Virginia's even with the state. It's good to see YCSD is above both.
That's another great measure that looks at a different perspective, and it measures our student performance from a different angle that is more aligned to what the kids are actually learning at school, the ACT.
How did...I know ACT is discussed every once in a while in schools. You hear more chatter about the SATs when you do the ACT. Is there more and more emphasis, I guess, on educating the families about the difference between the two tests, and, you know, career path or direction of the student?
There is. When our students sit down with their guidance counselor, thinking about college, those two test options are...they're presented to students, and based on the child's academic performance, they're licensed, dislikes academically, then they select a test. And sometimes, kids take both tests because there is a difference sometimes in the performance.
It's also important to note now that next year, there will be a new SAT test, so our results could look differently in a year from now because of that new test.
Mr. Vladu, can you share some of the changes?
Absolutely. The largest change is that, you may remember that the SAT used to be out of 1,600 points, not 2,400. So, that is the largest point. The writing section is going to be optional. It is going to ask us to do some things differently. For instance, they're going to be asked to infer more. When they're writing, they're going to be asked to provide, you know, sort of the example to support with evidence their answers. And one of the other things is that for some of the math sections, they're not going to be allowed to use their calculators. So, in a nutshell, those are the biggest changes for the SAT.
Now, the PSAT that the students took recently, or I guess it was in October, that was based on the new test coming up. When will we know the results of the PSAT to kind of get an idea how we fall with the new test?
Generally, those results should be, and I will check on that. I don't know at this time when the results are going to be.
All right. Question?
Now, this will be evaluated annually, I assume, this particular objective here. Because, I mean, 66 is great, but, you know, next year, if it goes down to 40, you know. So, I just want to make sure this is...celebrate our success, but move on.
It is, and one of the things we do every year, and this data is presented to our principals, they look at the goals, they create goals, and put things in place to make sure that we don't take a step back. And for, at least for the past four years, we have shown growth every year. So, it's something that we monitor very closely. We certainly do not want to be surprised when the scores come out.
Dr. George, we will have to revise it, though, because the writing will not be required. And so, the score of 15, 50 is calculated with the reading, math, and writing score, and so, writing will not be required anymore. So, we'll have to wait until a college board determines or gives us what is the college and career ready standard, because that 15, 50 was established by college board rather than by local school divisions.
15, 50 out of 2,400.
Yes.
This...I'm sorry, Paige.
Was any reason given why the writing wouldn't be considered anymore?
They have. I'd have to go back and look at the documents they've provided. I'm not sure.
Actually, there are about 25 major universities in the state of Virginia. They do not require the writing, and, you know, we could go and list those colleges, but there are quite a few major ones. So, colleges are moving away from the writing section. They're looking primarily at reading and math. But that's a response to what colleges are looking for, for the most part.
The writing is not required on the ACT as well.
A favor?
No, the documents that are on Board Docs now, they will stay on for future. They won't come off of Board Docs. And the reason I ask, as we move forward to January, as we want to go back, as I may at some point go back at some free time to look at past reports versus having a hard copy. They'll be there.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. At this time, I would like to shift to Goal 2 for engagement and rigor. One objective on the Goal 2 states that prior to FY '15, staff will develop a curriculum for a middle school course that prepares students for challenging high school courses. During FY '15, middle schools across the division began offering the Advanced Course Experience course in order to equip students with the skills necessary to be successful in advanced placement in IB coursework. The course focuses on the development of collaboration, organization, problem-solving, critical reading, and writing. Over the past year, students enrolled in this course, used a project-based learning approach in order to learn the foundational skills needed in advanced high school courses. Students are also provided with learning experience that were designed to both motivate and prepare them for rigorous academic work. At this time, I want to take a moment to share some of the course highlights. Over this past year, students at Grafton Middle School engaged in a problem-solving unit. Students worked collaboratively to plan, design, and test their projects. Likewise, in another project at Grafton Middle, students completed a human, not problem-solving unit by brainstorming ways to improve basic school items, as well as to design the replacements. Both of these projects focused on collaboration and rigor to provide students with essential foundational skills and strategies. During the second week of October, middle school principals at all four schools shared best practices that engage students in the core components of the course. This year, our largest growth has taken place at Grafton Middle School, where the number of students enrolled in the course has more than doubled. As a school division, the number of students enrolled in this course has increased by eight percentage points. Schools will use these best practices to fine tune the courses and to increase enrollment. At the high school level, the Student Technology Leadership Corps was created to provide an opportunity to advance student skills in technology and leadership in grades 10 through 12. For FY '15, the class was offered as a blended learning course, and 12 students at three high schools completed the course. I would now like to take a moment to review the core components of the Student Technology Leadership Corps. Using a customer service approach, students work directly with educational technology facilitators and IT to provide assistance with hardware, software, networking, troubleshooting, and instructional support. Students also assist with the development of projects such as discovery education boards, BYOT guides, and videos, app tutorials, and tip sheets. Throughout the course, students maintain a list of help desk entries and journals demonstrating how they assisted teachers and students with the integration of technology. Though the course was available for enrollment at the beginning of the school year, no students are enrolled in the course as of yet. Currently, we're working to restructure this course in order to increase student enrollment. Over the past three months, we received feedback from students, the educational technology facilitators, information technology, guidance directors, and principals. On October 22nd, this course was discussed during the annual program studies meeting. As presently conducted, the course is a blend between information and instructional technology. In the end of the year survey, students reported that they will recommend the course to others. However, students are primarily interested in the information technology aspect of the course. Over the next few weeks, we'll work through the feedback provided to improve the content and delivery, as well as student interest in this course. In light of the feedback provided, we're presently collaborating with the Information Technology Department to deliver this curriculum to our existing career mentorship program. I would now want to thank you for the opportunity to present the work of our teachers, students, and their families on objectives on the Goal 1 and 2 of the strategic plan. At this time, the presentation is open for your questions and comments.
That was fine, as much as we went. Welcome back.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vladu. Great, Dr. Shandor, you can move us on to our next presentation.
Absolutely. I'm going to ask Ms. Candy Skinner to step to the podium. She's the Director of Elementary Instruction. She's going to provide us an update this evening on magnet and thematic programs, which is one objective under Goal 2.
Good evening, Chairman.
I'm sorry.
I've lost your presentation.
We're having a technical difficulty.
Just wing it. You can do it.
Is it on the...I don't see it here.
Got mine locked up a little few minutes ago.
No, wait a minute. That one's not. That one's...
Catherine's. No, that's Candy's.
Oh, it's in the middle. It was there, sorry. I apologize, it was in the middle of the presentation.
That's right, better safe than sorry.
Thank you.
All right.
Good evening, Chairman Metford, members of the Board, Dr. Shandor, and members of Cabinet. This evening, I'm going to provide you with an update on Goal 2 of the strategic plan. Within this goal, the Division is committed to providing engaging, rigorous opportunities for student learning through multiple magnet thematic programs. Later in the program, I will provide you with an update on professional development for licensed staff development, which falls under Goal 3 of the strategic plan. The first school I'd like to highlight this evening is Waller Mill Fine Arts Magnet. Waller Mill Elementary School hosted its first-ever museum day in June. Parents and community members were invited to the school to see a museum-style exhibit of student artwork. This was a whole-school project that lasted for several months and began with a book study of a new children's book called "The Museum" by illustrator Peter Reynolds. As part of this school-wide project, Catherine Otashi, who is the author of the book "One", visited Waller Mill and spoke about her love of writing and art. And you see her there, photoed. Students worked collaboratively with her to create a large bird sculpture made from their handprints, and this is currently on display in the school media center. If you haven't seen it, it's quite incredible. In preparing for this museum, the students at Waller Mill were invited to the children's literature exhibit at the Peninsula Fine Arts Center, where they learned firsthand how a museum is organized and set up for viewing. Upon their return, each grade level worked with the art teacher, Mrs. Koo, to choose a different artist to study, and they created their own piece of art during class. When it was time for the museum to be created, the students had a solid understanding of what they wanted their museum to be like for their special guests. The end product was a wonderful celebration of student work that was displayed and appreciated by a large audience. Now, I'd like to share a little bit about Yorktown Elementary School, which is our math-science magnet. The goal of this magnet program is to provide students with enriched instructional opportunities focused on STEM, which, as many of you may know, stands for science, technology, engineering, and math. These activities are an important part of every student's learning experience throughout the school year. The students not only experience STEM in the classroom, they also have opportunities to participate in STEM outside of school hours. Third- through fifth-grade students at Yorktown can join the STEM club, where they focus on increasing problem-solving skills. In this past summer, 27 students attended Camp Learn-A-Lot, where they participated in integrated reading and STEM activities, and then shared their work with family members. Yorktown Elementary School also participated in the Virginia Stock Market Game throughout the 2014-15 school year. Approximately 235 4th and 5th grade students worked in small teams to invest about $100,000 in a simulated stock market. Teams of four to five students worked with the math resource teacher you see here, Mrs. McLeod, to monitor the progress of their investments and to buy and sell stocks to increase the return on investment. We are excited to share that during April, a 4th grade team from Yorktown ranked first in the state out of 400 teams. It's quite impressive. What's even more impressive is that these teams were not just elementary students, they also included secondary students as well. So, that's quite an impressive accomplishment. So, now, I'd like to turn our attention to our middle and high school arts magnet programs, and we will begin with Queens Lake Middle School, we also call M-SAM. Over the past several school years, M-SAM and SOA students have been involved in filming at Colonial Williamsburg Studios, and other locations as actors in the Emmy award-winning Electronic Field Trip series. The series reaches approximately 2.5 million students a year. The first photo you see here is our students in the studio, and the second photo actually is a photo of the Electronic Field Trip Emmy win this past July for the Amazing Trade Shop Math Race, which featured three of our MCM students. Each year, our MCM students also collaborate with SOA students in the dance art classes to perform at the Swing Dance fundraiser, which features live band music and the Dance Arts Jubilee, which is held in the spring. Approximately 110 students spend a semester each year on the show, and they perform multiple dances to the delight of a packed house. Bruton High School is the home of our York County High School Arts Magnet, which we call SOA. Students at SOA attend the Virginia Theater Association Conference in the fall, and this program is the biggest theater conference for high school and college students on the East Coast. During the conference last year, SOA presented Actor's Nightmare and one honorable mention for their work. In addition, Carrie DiFiori won a Special Directors Award, and three other SOA students won Top Actor Awards. Another student also won first place for her set design. During the 2014-15 school year, SOA literacy arts classes partnered with grade 5 students at Waller Mill Elementary School on a project-based learning story-writing workshop project. The 5th grade students worked in small teams to create a one-act play, and the SOA students acted as their editors and helped them with their form, their mechanics, characterization, plot, and setting. It's great collaboration there. And this brings us to our International Baccalaureate Program, which is located at the York High School campus. The IB program philosophy encourages students to be well-balanced learners. To help accomplish this, the IB program asks students to focus on creativity, activity, and service, or they call it CAS, as a core element of their academic journey. In 11th grade, students develop plans to engage with these three strands of CAS, and by the end of 12th grade, they're able to demonstrate through personal reflection their development in these areas. And these are actual pictures from some of the students and their presentations that they did. Students in IB also take the Theory of Knowledge course during their senior year. Theory of Knowledge lies at the very heart of the IB program, and in this course, students become aware of themselves as thinkers to gain insight into the complexity of knowledge and to recognize the need to act responsibly in our increasingly interconnected world. They learn to recognize different perspectives and how to use reflection as a tool to gain insight. This course includes research and a strong focus on oral and written communication. Many of our former IB students have shared that this course has been instrumental in preparing them for the rigor of life in college. So, at this time, I'd like to open up for any questions that you might have about our magnet programs.
Well, I think they're doing a wonderful job, and I'm proud of the work they do. As I look through this and I think, okay, what about some of these great ideas that our magnet schools are doing? Can we copy those and then implement them at McGruder, Coventry, Seaford, TAB, and Mount Vernon?
We do spend time collaborating with...our principals do spend time collaborating about some of the programs they have, and they do share ideas. Some of these things are unique to the magnet just because of the additional staff that we provide to those schools, but we certainly can look at doing more of that, yes.
I have a question, I have a comment. What I really like about this is that a lot of these kids, regardless of where they are on the spectrum, can participate in this. You know, the arts, you know, the M-SAM, the School of the Arts, unless it's the literaries, you know, but the others, I mean, if they've got talent, there's an audition, but, you know, this is wide open for these kids. And it just, once again, kind of is in keeping with our strategic plan of trying to provide opportunities throughout the spectrum of the division, and I like that a lot, serving that purpose.
Yeah, I think one of the positives is choice. You know, we offer so many different options and opportunities for students in York County to find their path or to, you know, seek a direction. Now, one thing I didn't see mentioned, that it's not really a magnet, but the Health Sciences at Bruton High, I guess that hasn't reached that level of where it's a magnet piece, but it's something else that we have that should be highlighted, I think, to say, hey, you know, we have a Health Sciences program that some students may decide to take courses at Bruton High School that may direct themselves going to New Horizons one day, which opens up even more opportunities for students that step outside our school to do other things. So, I think sometimes you hear people talk about, you know, choice in school and where to...we do a lot in York County public schools. And then you take the regional programs that wrap around that, there's multiple opportunities for families and students to engage in, which I think is fabulous that you presented on the ones that we highlight here.
And there's many, many other wonderful activities these schools are doing. These are just a few that we chose to highlight this evening.
Now, your IB, if I may ask, the other schools focus on the entire student body in those schools, where the IB is going to draw from all the high schools and predominantly York High.
It does draw from all of the high schools, and I don't know the representation at our IB program, how many, what the percentage is from each of those schools.
We can look at that. I'm still thinking, I'm ahead to retreat, and I think when we start looking at different programs, what's the representation, the diversity of programs like this would be good to know.
And then, something else to mention, and, you know, I know we're going to talk about this later on, about Yorktown Elementary School and the growth that we see in that zone, but that magnet concept at the school, I mean, this board is dedicated to making sure that we keep that defined there and support whatever we need to do, so that concept is alive and well and working well within the confines of that building. So, I know, that's later on in the presentation of how to deal with some of that, but all these are unique to itself and within that building, so whichever building it's in.
When we talk about IB, it would be a nice comparison to see how many students are in the IB program, how many are in the Governor's School, and to make up the diversity of those students in both programs.
Thank you. Wonderful.
Did you use your second part?
Yes. Okay, so now, I'd like to switch gears a little bit, and I'm going to provide you with an update on the work that we're doing to support our licensed staff in the area of professional development. So, within this update, I will highlight some of the professional development activities that we provide to support Goal 3 of the York County Strategic Plan. So, when you look at the York County School Division Strategic Plan, the instructional focus areas that emerge include K-12 literacy, transformative learning, closing the achievement gap, and supporting our new teachers and administrators. Tonight, I'll provide you with a brief overview of the training that has been provided to our staff in these areas, and we'll begin with K-12 literacy. In August, Denise Trainor, who was our 2014-2015 York County School Division Elementary Teacher of the Year, she kicked off our first day of training, and on this day, teachers receive training on the components of the K-5 literacy model. Throughout the school year, training continued on the new instructional materials and assessments. And then, in January, teachers gathered in grade-level teams throughout the school division to learn about guided reading during... to learn about guided reading. During this training, teachers viewed videos of our very own York County School Division teachers demonstrating and sharing best practices for guided reading. During the school year, teachers were also invited to attend optional monthly literacy seminars, which were provided by our own School Board Office staff and then also some of our teacher leaders. The next step for K-5 literacy is to begin our journey into writing workshop. During this school year, instructional trainers are focusing on learning and implementing writing workshop in their classrooms. As Dr. Stevenson shared, in August, most of the FY15 school year was spent developing the foundations of the secondary literacy model. This year, the focus will be turning to professional development. On September 1st of this year, secondary English teachers and middle school reading specialists attended a half-day of professional development, and during this PD, teachers learned about the literacy models, guidelines, and expectations for instruction as they attended breakout sessions conducted by our own secondary English teachers from across the school division. York County continued its work in the area of transformative learning during the FY15 school year. Through the support of the DODIA grant, the division held four PBL 101 sessions in the summer and fall of 2014. 285 teachers were trained in project-based learning during those sessions. In 2014, three division teachers and two division administrators successfully completed the PBL Capacity Building Program. Through a mentorship model, these five individuals are now certified to facilitate the PBL 101 workshop. The new training team will allow us to continue our professional development in the area once these grant funds have expired. And as you may be aware, the DODIA grant was a three-year grant that was for about a value of 2.5 million. The funds in this grant will be spent out by the end of this month, so these trainers will help us continue that training. The Capacity Builders offered an optional PBL session for interested teachers in October. As you know, we have scaled back on our PBL requirements this year. However, we did have about 74 teachers who signed up for that training, so because of that, we'll be offering additional training sessions this month in November to meet this demand. I'd like to share some of the feedback we received from our recent PBL training session in October. And these are actually stickies that some of the teachers had written, and I'll read them to you because I believe there might be a little difficult to read there on the screen. The first one, a teacher wrote, "I used to think PBL was just a project for kids to do in class. Now I understand that it is more about going, excuse me, about meaningful exploration. I used to think PBL would not apply to my class. Now I know it can and how important it is in helping my students and peers. I used to think PBL was addition to teaching, but now I know it is the teaching." So this activity provided them an opportunity to tell us what they thought about PBL when they came, and then when they left, their feelings about how they can use it in their classrooms. Then lastly, in transformative learning, as part of our DODIA grant, York County teachers in grades K through 12 were given the opportunity to participate in DE's Board Builder Professional Development. DE is discovery education. Teachers in DE cohort learn an instructional strategy that allows students to create video tutorials for the purpose of learning their own course curriculum. This training has now concluded as the DODIA grants are wrapping up. Now I'd like to share some of the professional development we have provided to assist with closing the achievement gap for our students. As you remember, as you may remember in our presentation in September, we shared about some of our programs that helped to support the academic achievement of our students this past school year. These programs included Tiered System of Supports, Level Literacy Intervention, and Math Buddies. These programs would not have been successful without the quality professional development and the support of our DODIA grant. During the Tiered System of Supports training, 33 administrators from 19 schools were trained over three sessions. During the FY15 school year, 31 elementary special education teachers and reading specialists were trained on literacy, level literacy intervention. As of this date, we have also trained all of our secondary special ed teachers and middle school reading specialists. Additionally, 25 special education teachers at the elementary level were trained on Math Buddies last year. And finally, our LEP paraeducators and teachers and tutors received 16 hours of professional development focused on proving academic outcomes of our English language learners. These sessions focused on topics for teaching comprehension, building vocabulary, and developing written and oral language skills. And finally, York County does understand the importance of supporting our teachers and administrators that are new to the profession. In August of 2015, we welcomed 74 new teachers into the school division. And during new teacher orientation, they received training in a variety of areas. Some of these included information technology, child abuse reporting, benefits payroll. They were also given an overview of the curriculum and instruction components of their subject or grade level. Teachers new to the profession were also provided with a one-to-one mentor, and lead mentors supported experienced teachers who were new to our school division. Each year, our trainers, excuse me, each year we train our new mentors because sometimes the people that are mentoring our new teachers are new to that role, and we train them. This training is based on the Clinical Faculty Program at the College of William &amp; Mary, and once training is complete, mentors and mentees also engage in peer observations during the school year. The school division also provides ongoing support for our new special education teachers throughout the school year. And during the 14-15 school year, 22 new special education teachers attended training sessions that support them in their role as a special education teacher. And last year, three of our principals completed a York County Principal Mentoring Handbook as part of their National Principal Mentoring Certification Project. Additional principals have been identified for this training, and they have attended this year. This training provides us with a strong foundation for assisting our new principals and for many years to come. That's our goal. New principals also receive training throughout the year in areas such as fiscal management, communication, and parent engagement. So making sure that we are providing high-quality professional development is very important to our school division. We strive to make sure our professional development is job embedded, it's ongoing, and it's sustainable. To do this, we often seek input into our professional development trainings. We often use data to identify a specific need for training. When possible, we do seek assistance from our staff in that planning process. We also strive to make sure we are using research-based practices for adult learning. And as practitioners, we also take the opportunity to reflect on our trainings. We assess our impact and next steps by providing participants with an evaluation after the session concludes. So that really brings me to the end of my presentation. I appreciate you allowing me to share some of the exciting things that have happened over the 14-15 school year in the area of professional development for instruction. And at this time, if you have any questions for me, I'll be glad to answer them.
When you provide professional development for teachers, are you training them to go back to the school and then provide professional development in that certain area for their colleagues?
We do have some professional development. We call that Train the Trainer Model. For example, our instructional trainers right now in literacy are in that model. So we have been working with them to provide them strategic, teaching strategies for writing workshop, and each month, they meet with their school-based teachers, and they're providing them with instruction in those areas. And then sometimes we provide professional development for the teachers just to apply what they've learned directly with students. So we have a multi-tiered system.
One other question. When you talk about the number of teachers who are undergoing professional development, do you keep track with the number of teachers from this school and that school so you know, oh, wow, one school is heavy with professional development and another school really is lacking? Do you keep up with the schools?
We do. Division-level professional development, we allocate our slots equitably to the schools to make sure that we are making sure that we're getting everyone in every school met. So yes, that is important to us.
Can you, the teacher mentorship program, explain that to me again? That's just taking a teacher to mentor a teacher, a new teacher, is that correct?
Correct. It's a tiered system as well. When teachers come to York County, we have teachers that are brand-new, they've never taught before, and then we have teachers that have taught previously when they come to us. So the brand-new teachers receive a one-to-one mentor through that school year, and we train those mentors if they've not been trained, we go through a training process with them. And then teachers who have taught before, we have a lead mentor in the building who mentors those new teachers.
Okay, so the teachers that are, they're paired up with a teacher that has experience, basically?
Yes.
And I guess my question is, do you try to put them with somebody that has X number of years of experience? How does that shake out?
We do. We do try to, we have a requirement typically, it's two to three years of teaching experience to be a mentor, and the principal also has to be okay with them being a mentor. So it's a process that we go through, and we do try to pair them up with someone of the same content or grade level when possible. It's not always possible, but we do try to if we can.
Mr. Mentor?
Are there a few key factors that you use in determining what professional development is needed?
We do. We do try to look at our strategic plan, and of course, we want to provide professional development that aligns to the goals of our strategic plan. That's very important to us. We also look at our student performance. For example, a couple of years ago, we noticed that we needed to really provide additional resources to our special education teachers based on how our students with special needs were performing. And so the level literacy intervention training that we've done and the Math Buddies training that we've provided comes from that direct need.
Thank you.
That's my question. You referenced the DODIA grant quite a bit, so it seems as though we were able to accomplish a lot with that grant. Is that something that we can write for for another year or two years so that we can keep the momentum and build on what we've accomplished?
The first DODIA grant, the one that's closing out, there was not an opportunity to apply for that grant again, but we did apply for another DODIA grant. We've actually received two, Dr. Guy, if I'm correct. One that's helped us purchase quite a few of those interventions I've mentioned this evening, and the second one we just recently received, and that is in the area of literacy. So that's going to be exciting for us to support our work that we're doing in K-12 literacy.
That's great.
I'm sorry.
Go ahead, I'll wait.
You probably already covered this, but the new teacher orientation, can you tell me a little bit about that? I mean, what is the timeframe? How long does that last and what does that entail? What are we giving these folks?
It's a two-day training that we provide to them, and we collaborate, they receive training on areas of operations, and they also receive training in the area of instruction. They get to know many of the instructional specialists that supervise the content of the area in which they're teaching, so they spend some time with them, looking at the Virginia Department of Education website, looking at the resources that are provided to them there. They also spend a considerable amount of time looking at what our expectations are for our teachers as far as the instruction in the school division. They receive training from a variety of members. Doug does a great training in the area of information technology. They've received some training in communication. It's just a variety of topics that they receive in those two days.
Do we do anything, say, three months in, six months in? Do we reevaluate these folks or give them opportunities? You know, say they're feeling swamped in some area that's just not flowing the way that they want, what are their opportunities at that point to jump back into something like this and to kind of get things reinforced for them?
Right. We use our mentoring program primarily for that purpose, so there's an expectation that our mentors are meeting with our new teachers on a routine basis, and so if there are concerns, typically that mentor, the lead mentor's working with the principal, because we don't want them to go several months down the road and find out a teacher is struggling. We want to help them as soon as possible and provide them with the support that they need right then and there.
And that would be picked up by the mentorship program, I guess.
Yes, and we do do surveys of our new teachers in our mentoring program to look at the level of support and how we can improve our program each year.
I'm sure not everybody's comfortable just coming forward and saying, hey, I'm really struggling here. So, you know, they want to put forth and do their best, and sometimes it's hard to admit that. So I'm glad to hear that, at least there's somebody there on a one-on-one basis that they feel like they...
Absolutely.
Thank you.
I have a couple of questions. One is, I don't, you probably won't have the answer for it tonight, but it may be a retreat discussion as we move into that in January, February, and that is, you mentioned a few times, instructional specialists and the support from central office for the programs and initiatives and best practices and things that we've done. I guess the question would be, are we, do we have the necessary level of support even through the years of different cuts we've made at central office and those support positions that actually support instruction in the buildings? Do we need to look at that and reevaluate as a board and take a step back and decide, you know, do we have enough math specialists and enough, you know, reading specialists and such in the special education area? So I don't know if you have an answer to that question. I mean, I'm sure y'all step back and evaluate, is someone really overwhelmed or can reach all those different PDs that are taking place out there?
We do. One of the major expectations of our instructional specialists is to be in buildings supporting teachers, and when you have one person who oversees all of K-12 math, that can be a very challenging schedule to meet, but our specialists are dedicated to our teachers, and they work very hard to meet all of those needs. But there are a lot of needs.
And I think that's something we are going to have to look at. Paras, okay? Our instructional paraeducators, whether they're in the special education world or the regular education world. Talk just briefly about professional development we provide for that world.
We do provide professional development. Our paraeducators do not work a whole lot more days than what our students attend.
Right, we've cut back on that, unfortunately.
Correct.
And that's something else we're going to have to come back and visit, but yeah, go ahead.
Yes, so we do try to provide, well, we do provide professional development to them on the days that we can. We're actually looking at increasing that model for next year and maximizing on days where we have maybe just a half-day with students and providing additional professional development in the area of instruction. We've done, we've done, our instructional specialists have provided some, but we really want to look at providing more. And so we're actually discussing that right now as a group, and because these are professionals who touch our students every day, and we want to make sure that we're providing them with the support and the tools, you know, that they can use as they work with students in small groups in the classroom.
Well, I see how, you know, being in the buildings every day, I see how much the teachers lean on the paras. I mean, as far as that, I mean, that's like their right arm in many cases, or their leg, you know, and for them to have the adequate, meaningful professional development also that can be blended right into that classroom is, I knew we were doing a lot, but I'm happy to see that y'all are talking about doing more.
We've had multiple discussions about this with our instructional team. When you think about the number of special initiatives with LLI, Math Buddies, we've rolled out over the last year a number of special programs. So just the training you heard tonight as an example of how we train our teachers, our para-professionals need this training. They certainly need some additional training in instructional practices. So we've had multiple conversations. We're looking forward to taking care of that as we move forward.
And then one last thing on the discovery education piece. I know you had mentioned that with the DODIA grant going away, we're losing discovery education, or are we just losing the professional development piece that we get from that?
The PD piece. We still have DE streaming, which is widely used by our staff.
Oh, okay.
While we're talking about PD, last year, we sat at this table, and we were really emphasizing that we wanted a stronger guidance department or counseling department. What kind of professional development are the guidance counselors receiving?
We provide a variety of professional development. Over the past school year, Dr. Rogers worked really at great length with them in looking at meeting the needs of gifted students and making sure that when we are talking with our students that we're looking at all the different facets that need to provide support to them. I know we've also, I know, believe he partnered with some of our outside organizations, Dr. Ellen Fithian?
Ellen Fithian.
I'm sorry, I think I pronounced her name incorrectly. I know that she's also spent some time with our counselors. Our elementary school counselors and our secondary school counselors are receiving training this year on mental health. I believe our secondary counselor has attended last week.
No, it's November 11th.
And elementary is attending November 11th, I'm sorry, I've got my dates a little wrong, and November 11th of this week. So we're very excited about that partnership as well.
One thing to piggyback on that, one of the, and I think it's being done, I hope it is, one of the issues was, you know, when you bring a counselor in... it is, one of the issues was, you know, when you bring a counselor in for high school, there's a big difference in a high school counselor and a middle school counselor. And I know that was a topic of discussion. Can you, one of y'all tell me, is that, there's specific training to bring them into the high school realm, I assume, instead of, because I think in the past, there's been the assumption, oh, they've done it in middle school, they can do it in high school. And it's like, it's like apples and bananas.
They're all certified K-12. And so when they come in at any level, if they're coming in, whether they're coming in inexperienced or whether they're coming from a different level, you've got to treat them new in terms of the responsibilities that they have to learn for that level. And much like you have in the, although it's not a formal mentoring program, I don't think we-
We do provide them with a one-to-one mentor if they're new.
If they're brand new.
If they're new.
If they're coming into the high school level?
Well, at any level, because there are things that they have to know and understand at each level. So they would be provided with a mentor.
Okay, I think I'm getting my answer. So specifically at the high school level, I mean, if you've got someone at the middle school level, they haven't dealt with-
They would have a high school counseling mentor that would be there that would help them.
That would bring them through. And what does that consist of? Just kind of a shadowing type thing, or is it a-
Well, it would be, it would be the person who would be working with them to make sure that they understood the responsibilities of their job and what they needed to do. The director also, that remember, each high school has a director. And that director is going to help work with that individual as well to make sure. And different high schools do it differently. There are some high schools that do it, they distribute their counselors to grade levels and the students follow them through. Some do it alphabetically, so when you do it alphabetically, everybody is dealing with ninth, tenth, eleventh, and twelfth. And so they collaborate and share and have dialogue. But given the size of our guidance departments, typically speaking, the directors have a lot of hands-on experience when you have somebody that changes levels or is brand new. We've got a lot of guidance school counselors, excuse me, that at some point in time were brand new and much like somebody who changes levels, you'd have to have somebody support them and help them.
Don't get me wrong, we're blessed with wonderful counselors all across the division. But you got to think, somebody comes in, you know, all of a sudden in ninth grade, you're starting a path, and they got to start in ninth grade and they got to follow that path. And that needs to have one goal in mind, which is, you know, college or career integrity or whatever they're doing. So, you know, it doesn't, you can't start in the middle, you got to start at ninth grade. So I, you know, that just was a concern of mine. And I'm glad that we're addressing that at least and making sure that when they come in, they hit the ground with their feet running, so to speak.
Actually, I think many of our students start in seventh grade. They start that in middle school, starting to design their high school.
It's a five-year plan. So it does start in middle school.
We also have a lead counselor for secondary and a lead counselor for elementary that work with the directors. And we provide training through those individuals as well.
Thank you.
All right, we have one more presentation this evening.
Yes.
One more. The operational updates for the professional development and partnership and relationships objectives will be presented this evening by Dr. Catherine Jones, the Director of School Administration. Dr. Jones?
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Medford, members of the board, Sharon Doran. This evening, I will thank you on Goals Three and Four of the strategic plan. Under Goal Three, professional development.
We're having technical difficulties, give us one second.
Wait a minute.
Yeah.
There we go.
Under Goal Three, professional development, the objective, all staff who participate annually in the high-quality professional development program that supports the goals of the strategic plan. In operations, the professional development activities are implemented in three ways: division-wide, virtually, and through multi-agency presentations. Division-wide, there was training for new teachers, substitute teachers, clerical staff, bus assistants, bus drivers, custodial staff, nurses, paraeducators, and administrators. The new teacher training included topics such as benefits, payroll, classroom management, workplace harassment, division policies and procedures, information technology, and child abuse and neglect reporting. Bus drivers and bus assistants received training in the reporting of traffic accidents, safe management of disruptive behavior on the bus, security of buses, bus evacuation drills, and distracted driving and human error. The custodians received training on policy updates, safety, understanding tax on uniforms, and the 800 megahertz radio. The nurses received training in CPR, concussions, Aspen, insulin, leukogen administration, and mental health. Paraeducators received training in autism, inclusion, and effective strategies with learning and behavior-challenged students. And lastly, administrators received professional development in national incident management system, school finance, school law updates, policies, the 800 megahertz radio, and mental health issues. We also use virtual training with Safe Schools. This training was in cyberbullying, bullying prevention, diabetes awareness, sexual misconduct, and blood-borne pathogen exposure prevention. We require all division employees to complete the online training each year. Lastly, training is delivered through a multi-agency approach. We are fortunate to have fire and life safety, law enforcement, and our assistant county attorney to work with us with training in the areas of internet awareness, national incident management system, school law updates, and the 800 megahertz radio. Questions?
This is great.
Thank you.
Great, yeah.
Now, under Goal Four, partnerships and relationships. The objective, staff will continue to implement and refine strategies annually to promote positive relationships among students. In achieving this, schools have implemented bullying prevention strategies. October, as you know, was National Anti-Bullying Prevention Month. However, our schools have found it beneficial to incorporate these strategies throughout the school year. There is also information on our website on internet safety for parents, there's a tip sheet and cellphone use family guide. Additionally, there are links to resources such as stopbullying.gov and a bullying awareness guidebook. Now, the next objective, under Goal Four, staff will facilitate strong school-family relationships, including welcoming school environments and effective two-way communications with families. Schools and departments will provide data to measure the facilitation of strong family-school relationships. We have partnered with the York County Department of Social Services to implement a school-support family preservation program at Bethel Manor Elementary School to provide prevention and intervention services that support children's growth and the development, strengthen families, and promote school success through home, school, and community collaboration. Now, the program supervisor is in the building each Wednesday from 8:30 a.m. to 12:30 p.m. Beginning the second semester now, the program supervisor will be in the building two half-days a week. Some other activities that schools continue to use to involve parents are parent-teacher conferences, parent-universities, school-wide reading activities, and parades of book characters. Additionally, we have reinstated the Family Engagement Committee. The committee consists of a representative from each of the schools. The purpose of the committee is to research, review, and implement strategies that will actively involve more families in the education of their children. A speaker is scheduled for November the 19th. Her name is Gloria Dalton from the Virginia Department of Education, and she will speak to the group on effective strategies in getting parents involved. We also continue to connect with parents via social media. Now, a number of parents and non-parents are involved in our schools as volunteers. We have received over 100,000 volunteer hours. If we were to equate the number of hours to a dollar figure, the services would be worth well over $2 million, according to the National and Community Services for Volunteering and Civic Life in America. Now, this is an independent federal agency. The website shows how states and cities rank on different factors related to volunteering and civic engagement. This concludes my updates for Goals Three and Four, professional development and partnerships and relationships. Are there any questions?
I know I'm singing to the choir when I talk to Dr. Jones about family engagement because she's been cheerleading this long before I ever stepped on this board. How do you feel about the Family Engagement Committee and what should we expect out of that committee?
I think we are going to have great things happening now. A few years back, we were just in the stage of pulling information and trying to get things out into schools. I think we have solidified things now, we can move a step further. You're going to see great things and more family engagement.
Excellent. When we look at our volunteer hours, and this, I may have to go a distance on this, once we have this estimated financial piece, how do we use it? Is there any way of using it? Do we?
Catherine Goff puts it in the annual report that we produce each year to let the public know the type of involvement that we have with our parents. Each school keeps track of it themselves, they put it in their newsletters as well. Catherine Goff, anything you would like to add to that where it might go? We also include it, I think I've got a section in the budget document that talks about volunteer hours as well.
But it's just a good PR piece.
Yeah, exactly.
Because it doesn't, it doesn't help us in any way, other than that.
No, we don't get any, I guess you might say, compensation in terms of just the in-kind contribution of the volunteer work, which I don't want to minimize that.
Oh, by no means, no, no.
That is tremendous.
It's fantastic, because we couldn't do what we do if we didn't have this.
Exactly right, exactly.
It would be good to keep an eye on the number of volunteer hours since it has dropped since 2012 and 2013, to make sure that parents feel welcome to come into the school to volunteer.
I know Mrs. Haywood, York County does the same thing on their side of keeping up with the number of volunteer hours of each department or agency within the county. So if you combine ours with York County, and it fluctuates just like this on the county side, it fluctuates a lot, but it's just huge number of hours that the community volunteers to support this community. So to see what we do, I mean, we're, I think we're ahead of York County as far as number of hours, definitely. Mr. Mentor?
Yeah, Dr. Jones, the fluctuation, from year to year, schools could have different activities and needed volunteers. Some years, they could be doing a lot more.
Absolutely.
So that fluctuation does not indicate a lack of interest, it just did a number of things that didn't-
Just a number of activities, sort of things that are going on.
Do we keep up with that? If there's a big activity, like I know, like I would have expected Coventry and McGruder celebrating the 25th anniversary, that their volunteer hours would be up because of that. Do we keep up with the events going on at the schools?
Yes, we do. And we have the number of hours for each school by month, yes. And if you would like that information-
Sure, that I would, thank you.
Are these volunteer hours across the division, K-12?
Yes.
Is there any way to know how that breaks into each level? That would be interesting to see.
Give you, and I will provide that information when we get back to the office, yes.
Remember when we first thought that once we made our schools more secure and changed the front office around and you could go no place but front office first, we thought that may have a bearing and it didn't. People still came in and volunteered.
I think the key to success in schools too is the PTAs. Because the PTAs, the number of hours being logged by that group of volunteers that are just servicing our buildings, whether it's a carnival, whether it's a book fair, whether it's, you know, multiple events that are going on to support the school. And then you got the school pieces that are being added to the volunteer hours of reading, you know, parents that come in and help read with students and such. And then the Read Across America, we have a month, depending on how many people sign up to read, I mean, that counts for volunteer hours. So it's just, you know, it's a wonderful thing to see people welcomed at our schools.
One thing that I did want to ask about was the parent-teacher conferences. Do we keep up with the number of no-shows as far as the number of families who do not attend the conference? Do we keep up with that information for follow-ups?
I think school-wide, they would keep, not at the division level, but by school, they would know which ones do not show, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. James.
Thank you very much. All right, is there a need for a break before we go into the next one, or should we keep on rolling? Everybody okay? All right, Dr. Shandor, you're going to take us into our Facilities Master Plan capital improvement program.
Yes. In a moment, Dr. James, Chief Operations Officer, and Mr. Mark Sheerhart, Associate Director of Capital Plans and Projects, are going to share our revised recommendations for next year's proposed Facilities Master Plan and Capital Improvement Plan. Before they jump into that presentation, I do want to make a few comments regarding one revision of the FMP. Once we get into the FMP, you're going to see a change in our FMP recommendation, which is to move the new elementary school back one year. As you recall, we conducted a feasibility study on the two sites available. Even though a building can be placed on those sites, they do offer limited space. Ideally, we're looking for more land for a school that will serve the community, this community, for the next 30 to 40 years. If we're going to build a school, it's important that we get the location right. We've worked closely with Mr. Morgan, our county administrator, and Mr. Carter at the county regarding a few other site locations in the northern section of our county. We're certainly not dismissing the need for the new school in our immediate future, but there's other viable options for us that have been presented to us that would be fiscally irresponsible for us not to give them some consideration. So with those comments, I want to shift it over to Dr. James so he can share some information regarding active residential developments in York County.
Right, thank you, Dr. Shandor. Mr. Medford, members of the board. In October, I shared with you a list of school zones that were most under increased enrollment pressure. So this evening, by using this map that's before you, I want to share with you about the particular developments in those school zones and give you some idea of what the projected numbers of students would be for each school based on numbers provided by the county. They have a generation number based on the type of residence, the number of students we should expect, as well as, especially for Yorktown Elementary, I'll share with you not only the projected number of students, but actually now during this school year, the actual number of students we actually have from that development. It's kind of interesting to note how far we are above the projection for that particular development. But we'll start in the upper end of the county. Number one, you can see the chart at the bottom, it tells you the development by number and where they're placed on the map. As well as just above that, it gives you the particular school zone that we are talking about. So the first one, number one, that's the reserve, and that's off Moretown Road there, and that's in the Wall and Mill Elementary Zone. And you can see based on the county projections with the units that are going in there, there we should expect 41 students at complete build-out there from the reserve. Coming down in the McGruder Zone, number two, that's Whittakers Mill, that's a new development. They just started to clear the trees, I talked with the developers just last week, and they tell me we should expect students there beginning February 2017. There you see, we expect 45 students at the elementary level. The Marquee, you know, that's one that's been out there on the radar for a number of years now, and we expect 113 students, but I can tell you, the developers should start to build the SAM's club and then work on the residential development, and I'm told that will begin in February of 2016.
McGruder? Yes.
Yeah, that's still McGruder. Coming down to number four, that's Rose Hill. That's a development in the Yorktown Zone just off Old Winsburg Highway 238, just by the Naval Weapons Station. There we expect at build-out, 52 students to attend at the elementary level. Another one, Battlefield Bluff, you haven't heard me talk about that one, but now that's been approved by the planning commission, and there we should expect 20 students at the elementary level. And of course, that's also in the Yorktown Zone.
Tell me where that is specifically.
You know where Yorktown Middle School is? There's your fire station, that's Crawford Road. Eventually Crawford Road now intersects Goosey Road as sort of a Y kind of configuration.
Battlefield Bluff, okay.
In that area right there, it's going to be Battlefield Bluff.
Almost a lackey.
No, it's on Goosey Road.
Goosey Road.
We haven't gotten to 238 yet, Old Winsburg Road. It's very close to the fire station and Yorktown Middle School.
The Y, yeah.
Okay.
Next is Nelson's Grant. We know Nelson's Grant is off Route 17, and that's, of course, is number six on this diagram. That's the development that's on the same side- That's the development that's on the same side of Route 17, that's Food Line and that shopping center. You see Subway and some of those restaurants there on, that's Nelson's Grant. Right now, at build-out, we expect to have 19 elementary students. The next one is Yorktown Crescent, and the projected number of students there should have been 27. Right now, we have 57 students coming from that development, and we have 17 kindergarteners from that development. That's a classroom.
So it was projected at 27, but we actually have 57. And that's what I'm wondering as I'm looking at these numbers. It's projected, but is this going to double or triple in size?
Right, when I talked to the county planner about this, he was really surprised by the number of students based on what they typically use to, as the generator. What are you talking about condominium, apartment, townhome, or single-family homes? None of them come up to more than .54 using their numbers, and it does vary, but none of them higher than .54, and you can see Yorktown Arch is really above that.
Dr. James, on the projected number of students for these developments, when they enter their process of getting approval, the county going through the, you know, process of planning, commission approving, of ultimately becoming a Board of Supervisors approval to develop a piece of property, is it the county that's coming up with the projection for us to work from, or is it the developer that's telling the county, this is what we're projecting this to be for students, and then the county just uses that number?
Right, yeah, that's a very good question. I'm glad you asked that question. But you'll typically find, the county has this number, the one I just talked about, these are the county's number. The developers would have that number. Most often, I'll find, the developer's number is much lower than the number that's projected by the county. Because they have to do a physical impact statement about the impact of that development on the resources within the county, and that number typically is much lower than the county's number.
Maybe moving forward, we should correct that.
Yes.
But these are from the county, not the developer.
These are from the county, not the developer.
Did you say the 57, was that at the Crescent or the Arch?
That's the Crescent.
The Crescent, okay.
You know, when I talked to Tim Cross about the Crescent, and at the Crescent, there's also on General's Way, the Quarter, all that for the county is considered the Arch, and that has, of course, 57 students. 17 at kindergarten and at second grade, that's 13. Those two grade levels.
The Arch or the Crescent?
The Arch.
And the Yorktown Arch is what kind of development, townhomes?
Townhomes.
All right.
Okay.
That should be something that should be really monitored carefully to project these other developments, because if we're seeing an influx of new family, kindergarten students, second-grade students, we're not talking high schoolers here and/or middle schoolers, then would they go back and look at these other proposed or actually under-construction communities and say, these were townhomes or a cluster of townhomes, a single-family home, and readjust their numbers based on what we're seeing in these other newer developments?
You know, what he does is look at all the developments. Sometimes you may get an outlier there, and the Crescent seemed to have been an outlier with what you typically could expect. But again, given where we are, we don't know with those types of homes what's going to happen.
I think what's happening is people are looking for a reason or looking for a affordable house in York County to bring their students to York County Public Schools. That's what's happening. So a townhome is affordable. A, you know, an apartment for a family is affordable, or a condo is affordable. So families now are, I might see more and more of this trend because that's affordable to families that can't afford a single-family home.
Did one of these developments originally have a 55 and over? Which one was that?
That was the Reserve at Winsburg, you know, that's in the Wallamille Zone.
Is this an unusual year for this many development? Is this a good time economically to build? And when I say that, we've got nine areas coming on board. I'm going back a number of years when a builder can purchase property, get it approved, and then wait until a certain time to build. That was a time we were ready for a moratorium, don't build it until we can get the seat space for students. Is this that time again that we have a lot of developments coming on board?
Yes, ma'am, we do have a lot of developments.
Unusually high this time?
Yes, ma'am, and you can also find that it's the type of developments, because now we're getting into mixed-use condominiums, townhomes, apartments versus single-family homes.
And this is not, this is not the top. We, there's still a lot of property to be developed in York County.
Yes, especially in the Yorktown Zone and McGruder Zone.
So we have no idea even down the road how this could blossom even more.
Right.
Well, I think it's important to look at the fact that, I mean, of course, we've been talking with our counterparts and staff, our staff's been talking with county staff reference to this elementary, new elementary school, the CIT, and we saw a lot of proposed developments go dormant or slow during the economy when it took a crash, but then knowing that it was going to turn back up again, which it now has, but it's turned up quickly, and they're moving quickly and really, you know, fast in development because this is the time that money's there and people can buy. It's unfortunate it's taken us long to get the elementary school on.
And what you'll find, there may be some, like Powell's Plantation, should have been developed, see across from Wallamille, in between 143 Rochambeau Drive and Route 132. That's been on the books for about 10 years. Nothing has happened. So when I talked to Tim Cross just this fall, he says he's going to move that to another category because nothing is happening, but at the same time, these other developments are now beginning to appear, because it's the market sector and what's, and what can people afford, and some of you just alluded to that about what's affordable now, and seeing the townhomes, apartments, condominiums are more affordable than the single-family homes.
And Dr. James, all of these fall into that category, apartments, townhomes, condominiums. None of these are single-family homes?
Well, the Marquee.
Will have some.
Woodhus Mill is, is townhomes and single-family homes. So we're finding a mix now.
Let me ask you, do you feel like the communication between, you know, Tim and his staff and the Board of Supervisors and school board, when we're looking at this sort of thing, that it's where it needs to be? I mean, you know, they, I don't think they've ever, you know, ridden off into the sunset and forgotten about us, the impact on us when they start approving these things, and I'm assuming the communication is pretty good in this area. Tim has always done a really good job, I thought, you know, and...
Yes, because whenever one of these developments comes forward, I would get all of the information.
Yeah.
I even get a plan of how it should look.
Yeah.
And then the physical impact and all of that, and then they ask me about potential school impacts. So we're able to respond to them before it actually goes through the entire process.
The only way we're going to survive this, and it sounds like a lot more of it coming, is to have really great, you know, we've got to work together on that for sure.
We need a new school.
Well, we know we need that, but I, you know...
That we've known.
Look beyond that even, I mean, there's going to be a lot of, I think there's a lot of growth potential, so...
If Dr. James can get to number nine, which is Commonwealth Green, which is the last one.
Commonwealth Green, that's the last one, that's the biggie, I'll call it. That has 400 some odd units, and that's a mix of apartments and townhomes, no single-family homes, and maybe some live above and some commercial spaces.
Where's that located exactly?
Commonwealth Drive is there.
Across from Kiln Creek.
Across Kiln Creek, if you go past, who knows? And the cinema. If you notice, when you go back there, some of the townhomes existing for a number of years are in Newport News. If you look at that line, it goes through those 400 apartments, and about 50 of those are really in the city of Newport News. The others are in York County. I'm told that our first student should arrive the 23rd of this month. A middle school student.
Done for?
It's done for the Graffs, Graffton Bethel, Graffton Bethel, Graffton High.
If you build it, they will come.
And if it's in York County.
I've got a feeling, 75 students with 400 units, I've got a feeling that that's going to definitely increase. Is it complete? You said the first families moving in this month, are all 400 units complete? Or there's, do you know how many are complete?
No, I don't know how many are complete. I can tell you they, when I was, I wrote by last week, just to take a look, as I do from time to time, they've not done the finished paving. The first unit section that you'll see, that may be the one that's going to open later this month. I just need to go by this week and see how much paving they have done, but a lot of it's not paved.
All right, well, let's continue moving forward.
As you can see, I mean, this is, this situation presents challenges for us within the school system. So I'm going to have Mr. Sheerhart talk us through some of the revisions to the FMP. Sheerhart?
Here are members of the board, Dr. Shandor. This is our 10-year Facility Master Plan. This has some changes from the draft that I shared with you at the work session last month. First of these, I'd like to touch on is capital maintenance projects. You see here, they're concerned HVAC repair, roof repair, and some other projects here broken out in those divisions. So the first is HVAC, and what I've done on these slides where there's a change from what I presented to you last month, it's in blue, you can see there, the only change really on this slide here is the York Tab High School window replacement. We're recommending moving that to FY '20 from FY '19. And then remember, all these here that are reduced, you know, the line-through numbers there were because we're coming up with a different type of fresh air system to provide fresh air to the buildings, and that's why we're able to decrease these amounts. I went over that last month a little bit. This next slide here is replacing the windows. Seaford, this is the change here, and you see here, we moved it from FY '19 to FY '20, and we have increased it to 600,000. Now, it's based on some discussions with a local architect, and they do not feel like we had sufficient funds in there to replace the Seaford Elementary School. So you moved it back to FY '20 to correlate with some other work we have going on in the building at the same time in FY '20. And then this slide here, there's no changes. So there's very few changes on this plan. There are some significant ones when we get down to the end here, but through this area here, some very minor changes. This one here, I recommended last month to do York High School's roof replacement in FY '18, and we decided it's probably more wiser to go ahead and do the A&E in FY '17 and get prepared for that roof replacement in FY '18 at York High School. And this is so we could concentrate on the roofs at Graffton High School and Middle School where we have significant leaks still, and we wanted to focus on that building first before we focused on York High School. This next slide, again, there's no changes here, and again, reductions here are due to the fact we're not taking, removing roofs and replacing, we're actually coating it, getting a 20-year coating on the roofs. This one here in Seaford, the low-slope roof there, we had originally moved this to FY '19, we're moving it back to FY '20, that's the change there. And at the bottom of the page there, you can see it in the green, those are the new items we had added last month to the FMP, so I just wanted to remind you about that. So then other projects, we have a few here. Again, there's very few changes to this FMP from what I showed you in the draft FMP, no changes on this page, and on this page, and on this slide. Then we have some significant changes here, and this is references a little bit of what Dr. Shandor and Dr. James were talking about here with the temporary modular classrooms and need in the Yorktown and McGruder areas. We've increased the amount there from $500,000 in FY '17 to $900,000 there, and we've also increased, we've also inserted $200,000 in FY '18 and '19. And what we're looking at there is installing a four-classroom modular unit at Yorktown Elementary School on the blacktop, existing blacktop there on the other side of the school. And then at McGruder, we would be putting up a six-classroom modular unit behind the school on the blacktop near the fire station. And so the money in FY '18 and '19 would pay the lease on the school. So that's why the dramatic increase there and why the money, the funding there in FY '18 and '19. Then if you notice down, the next one down, there's Bruton Area Bus Parking Lot. McGruder is suffering from major congestion there because they have, I think it's about 18 buses that are parked there now, and so there's a lot of congestion there due to the buses, and they also have to have places for the bus drivers and their assistants to park. So that all uses a parking spot in McGruder, so they're hurting there for some parking area. So we'd like to go ahead and move this parking area forward for Bruton High, in the Bruton Area, construct this parking lot. It would also reduce the amount of time, the amount of runs that the buses have to do with, when they're empty. So this is why we're trying to do that there, why we're recommending bringing that forward. Then down here at the bottom of this, in Tab Middle School, you see the change there, moved that from FY '20 to FY '21, and this is to bring it in alignment with some other major work that's going on in the building at that time. Seaford Elementary School, if you've been by Seaford Elementary School in the evenings or when they have an event there, they have, they're parking everywhere on that school, on the grass, on the street, everywhere. It's pretty bad, so we're recommending to insert in here, expanding the parking lot at Seaford Elementary School, and that's why we inserted this in FY '18. It's something that we need to get done to help alleviate congestion there and improve safety at that school. Then capital construction, now here's where you're going to see a little bit of change. The first slide is no changes there about the York High School annex, but then you hear, here's where you see the change that Dr. Shandor and Dr. James were referring to, the new elementary school. We're recommending to investigate other sites because of the constraints that we have on those two small sites we have at Yorktown Middle School and at the Marquee. So we have $3.5 million in FY '17 to purchase property, purchase land somewhere, and also to do the A&E for that building. And then we've moved the school back to FY '18. That will include, that's a larger site, it will take more A&E to do it, it will also take more money to prepare the site since it's going to be a larger site, but it will be much more practical and much more useful for the community as a whole for the next 30 to 40 years. Tab Middle, Queens Lake Middle School, next one down, we've recommended moving it out and back from FY, we had it recommended moving it FY '20, we're putting it back in FY '19, and this is due to the increased enrollment at McGruder. Those kids are going to have to go somewhere after they get out of McGruder, so they're going to go to Queens Lake, so we need to have, be prepared there. And then the last one there is an expansion at Seaford Elementary School. This would expand the library and the main offices there, build a security vestibule somewhat similar to Wallamille. It will also include replacing some of the rooftop air conditioning equipment that's beyond repair there, and also the casework that was not done, not replaced during the renovation. It will include replacing that casework in those classrooms there. So it's, we're calling it an expansion rather than renovation, it's not a total renovation or anything like that.
Before you leave that slide, let's go back up to the new elementary school just for a couple of questions. When that was put on last year, correct? The new elementary school?
Yeah, it was when it was approved by the school.
What year was it plopped into?
We had inserted it in FY '17 last year.
All right, last year, okay.
But it's been a request for how long?
Well, I mean, we've been requesting for a long, for five or six years, but last year...
We first presented you a question, the board requested it in FY '09 of the school year, and that was still its master plan.
So in '09, we started the request, turned down, turned down, turned down, but we kept working, the staff, our staff, their staff, we kept, you know, and then finally, we got it approved last year, put it in FY '17. Now FY '17 is the budget we start building here very soon. If the A&E, if the construction project would have been FY '17, the A&E would be being done like right now, correct? In a perfect world?
Yeah, in a perfect, the only thing that would throw a little wrench in that would be the fact that we're now looking at another spot of land. So if we don't have the land, we can't do the A&E services, so we've got to do that first.
I guess what I'm trying to ask the question in a roundabout way is, can't the funding, since we have a variable of land, whether we're going to explore, you know, federal properties, whether we look at these other properties, with, you know, taking everything under consideration, trying to accelerate the best we can, is it possible to still keep everything in FY '17 just in case we start accelerating the project? The monies are available, so we're not having to wait a whole another year to begin construction if we were able to get the land acquired and then A&E work done under and accelerated, we need this done now kind of thing. Because I think we're at the, we need this done now kind of thing at this point.
So you're asking, put all the funding in FY '17?
That's what I'm asking because...
Because I'd like, Mr. Sheerhart, to talk about, what's the typical timeline for an arch? Because I'd like Mr. Shearheart to talk about, what's the typical timeline for an architect to actually go ahead and to design a building?
Because we don't, just because it's in FY 17 doesn't mean it's also going to get spent in FY 17. But at least it's there.
Right.
And so things accelerated, we're prepared for it without having to say, okay, well, county didn't borrow enough money, we've got to wait. But if the county is prepared for it, they know our need. There's no question there with you and the contacts you've been having with Neil Morgan and the new county administrator. I'd just like to see it all placed in everything. I'm just sitting here thinking through this.
Whichever works to expedite the project.
That's what I'm thinking.
So what is it? Are you looking at a two-year, probably, is that kind of general?
It'll take about a year to do the design and probably 18 months to do the construction of the building. And now, we do have the unknown of how long it's going to take to find the property and to buy the property. That's a total unknown that we have no idea about.
But in design, though, isn't it possible that, let's say, in a perfect world, we find the property. The county assists us, we help, we find a piece, a chunk of property that's usable, and we take care of that as a matter of just, you know, purchasing it. And then the design, going, whatever architect gets that, can bring us some construction projects that have been done in the past where we're not designing a whole new from scratch kind of thing. Does that accelerate, I mean, speed that year up?
It will accelerate, and it will also reduce the cost of the design. But it's still going to probably be about a year. You know, so if we, FY 17, July 1st year, we get the money for doing the design, it's probably still going to take them a year to do the design. So in next FY, in next July 1st, we need the money for the construction. We can actually go out to bid before July 1st. We just can't award it until July 1st. So we can put things and wheels in motion, but we just cannot award it until July 1st.
Like you said, the big unknown is the land. What is the ideal number of acres that you would like to purchase for a new school?
Coventry is about 15 acres, and that's a pretty good size. I would like to see it maybe 17 acres. But Coventry is about 15, and that's reasonable size. I think Coventry is still somewhat limited in parking area, so because of that, I think it could be a little larger site.
There's so many other factors, you know, the topography of the land and the access and surroundings and how isolated. And just so many things that are going to come into play with that. It's going to take a while.
If construction starts, let's say that FY 17 is actually 16, 17. So July 1st is 17 is actually FY 18. So construction began on a new school July 1st. All the bids were done and everything, you know, was ready to be awarded. From July 1st of 2017, what's the perfect weather prediction for a project this magnitude to be completed?
Still, I'd still say probably 18 months. I don't want to push it any tighter than that because it's too many things, too many variables. I don't know what the weather's going to be like. If the weather's great in the winter, that's when it really gets us. If it continues to rain and rain and rain, and we just have mud, then we've got problems trying to construct the building. And that's kind of what happened with Page. They had a lot of mud and a lot of wet rainy days over Page, and it just looked behind.
The big question really, I mean, what are we going to need?
Oh, exactly.
We've had all these numbers.
Right, Mr. Metford, I would add, if we move the 23 million to FY 17 and the county borrowed for that, we're paying interest on $23 million that we may not be needing in FY 17. So it'd be probably more fiscally advantageous for us to time these projects in the year in which we're going to need the money to minimize the interest cost on it.
And I didn't think about that part of it because you're right, once they borrow the money, it's in the coffer.
We had to start paying on the interest.
That the debt service begins.
And I think there's no way that until the land's acquired, it could have an impact on the design of the building, so you really need that. And then, Mr. Jared, you may be to answer this. When we delay a project, we know that each year there's an increase in labor costs. Have you ever kept any statistics, like if we were going to do one two years ago?
It's an excellent question, Mr. Metford, but I can tell you what staff did do recently. We looked at what would it cost to build this elementary school out in year FY 23. We were just looking at some other options, and the projection we were looking at at that time was about 32 million. So it was about 5% a year. So just looking forward, I haven't, we haven't gone back to look at it, but looking forward, yeah, that's one of the concerns that I think we as an administration have with this project and not doing it as quick as possible is that, the cost of building. We know we need a new school, so the longer we wait to build that new school, the more it's going to cost us to do that just in the inflation factors dealing with construction. And as well as as the economy improves, more and more people are going to be using contractors. And as that happens, then our cost goes up because of the competition that takes place. And so that's an excellent consideration, and that's one that we considered when we were looking at a lot of different options on how to structure this.
One other thing that bothers me is we put this, well, it took us forever to get it on the CIP. But now we're going to spend a little over $1.2 million modular, temporary.
Exactly.
Throw it, there it goes, where, you know, that could have been applied to the land purchase, the A and E.
Now, there's one saving grace with that whole thing, and that is, if you had the new school today, you would be paying between a million and a million and a half in operating costs for that new school. So it's kind of a trade-off initially, but it gets to the point that I think everyone's talking about now, which is that you need the space for the students, and that's the overriding factor.
Exactly.
And that's what we've got to be concerned about, because we've got to deal with the operating cost one day, and that's just going to happen.
Can we, do we have room even with modulators? I'm just seeing this huge influx here. This has kind of got me a little bit...
Little bodies.
Yeah, we can do what we need to do with modulators for now, I guess, because we're talking, I mean, we're looking at our timeline here. We're ways out, we haven't even gotten land yet. So we can do what we need to do with modulators, I'm assuming. We have room to put those. Of course, they aren't cheap, but they're a whole lot cheaper than an elementary school right now. But is that, is that an accurate statement?
Yeah, but my fear is, he mentioned that you're going to put, proposing to put six modulators at Magruder, four at Yorktown, and we just rolled in four classrooms plus the existing modular there. Is four more modulators give us eight classrooms or four classrooms?
Will be four more classrooms added to what we have at Yorktown Elementary already.
Is that going to be enough for the next four years?
Well, it depends on the number. We don't, nobody knows what the numbers are going to be. Are the numbers that the county has given us accurate? We just don't know. So we have to, you know, we're not going to spend this money until we have to. We just...
Well, I think we need to be prepared. I mean, so I think if the responsible thing for us to do is to make sure we put, we've had staff investigate and analyze and assess the space for putting modulators there for right now. So our short-term plan has to be, we've got to get some modulators. And when you look at the statistics and when you look at the numbers, the one example that still gets me is we have one kindergarten classroom, one development. So, but again, that's unknown. The other developments may not be as bad as that one. We don't know that. But I think we need to plan for more children than less, especially in those two areas.
Yeah, I just want to be, I kind of feel like we're almost, maybe not quite, we're almost at the back of the pack, like trying to catch up now. I'd rather be in the middle or in the front, so I don't want to, you know, get caught that way. And I guess I'm a little bit nervous about that. The other thing is, I think these modulators, we know how families feel about modulators. Nobody likes them, they're not popular. And I think we need to get out in front of this thing and maybe do some good explaining to the community and let them be informed as to what we're talking about here tonight and why we're doing this and when we might expect to get out of that and what's coming in terms of an elementary school. And soon as you break ground for that elementary school, I think, you know, then they've got something they can feel like they've got buy-in. But right now, you know, we're still looking for land, so I think it might be important to maybe try to educate the community on this because they're not going to like it.
Now, when we talk about the trailers, are we talking about those learning cottages that we had at Dare Elementary School? And I believe they had toilet facilities inside there. So is that what we're looking at when we say we're going to put a trailer in a school?
Yes.
Yes. Both at Yorktown and at Magruder.
That's more of a longer, short-term.
Now, capacity-wise, I mean, the last time I asked about Magruder, it seems like it had about eight students, and it was at capacity. Where are we at Magruder and Yorktown Elementary as far as how many students can it accept before it is just like at capacity?
Magruder was at 666 last week at the 25th year anniversary, so they were at 666. And you want to, I know, it's not right at 13, so I... I go down, 665.
You know, my current classroom at Magruder and at Yorktown, I think Magruder is at 734 capacity. I think Yorktown is 740 or vice versa, but those are the two numbers for those two schools. One thing I can tell you, Magruder has a very large cafeteria. There's something we're concerned about cafeteria space, just like Coventry. You know, those are large cafeterias. At Yorktown, of course, that's the smallest cafeteria. But you also know in this facilities master plan for this coming year, we're looking at expanding the cafeteria, also expanding the offices at Yorktown Elementary. So that space should be available to us during the next school year to make the cafeteria larger at Yorktown.
Yorktown Elementary?
Good to hear your question.
What are the ones, Yorktown Elementary, what are they, what are they using now exactly in terms of extra classroom? I mean, we have these...
They just rolled the modules that we have.
But what are they, are they the same design that we're talking about?
They're not.
So they were lower grade design.
They're more traditional, like a portable that I taught in.
So it'll definitely be an upgrade, an upgrade from that.
Correct.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, so those are trailers that were currently all by the school board.
Yeah.
One was that Walla Mel, and the other was that Seaford. Can we move them to Yorktown?
Now, what about, it's a magnet school. What about the resource, the science and math resource teachers? Are they still in a classroom or are they revolving from class to class?
Currently, they're revolving from class to class because that resource, especially the sciences, is now used for a classroom because of the hot numbers that we didn't expect.
But those are the ones that are going to be set up as soon as we get the occupancy permit on the modulators that are out there now. So they'll get their classrooms back and all their stuff will get put back in them. I'm just worried about if the growth continues and we, you know, have 17 kindergarteners show up, the 13 of another second grade, the third grade.
Second grade.
Second grade. And then our third grades are bulging, you know, other grade levels begin to bulge, and then we have to hire another teacher. We hope that doesn't happen mid-year, but good gracious if it does. But we've got to have classroom space for them. So the modular purchase on the CIP is for, is $9,000 for FY 17. So it'd be July 1st of 16 before we can start better moving that in.
There's a lot of pre-work that we can do in anticipation of when the funding's available, we can move forward.
Now, Head Start over there, that trailer would have to be relocated.
That's a conversation that I need to have with the county staff, Head Start program.
Okay. It's an exciting time together, Wes.
Last slide, so this is showing you where we're at with the funding from last, the last time we had the FMP last year. So you see the first year, the green is, we're less funding, and then the red is also, it's higher funding. So you can see the end result here. We're a million four over what we had in the FMP last year. When I came to you last month, we actually had, we're in the green, $6 million. But because of the trailers and because of the expansion at Seaford and the cost for the new school, it has all driven this cost back up. So we're back up to 1.4 million more than we had last year, the FMP. So do you have any questions besides the ones we've already talked about?
Thanks a lot.
Try for good weather, speedy KNE. All right. All right, everybody still okay? All right, let's move into another update on school start time, a continuation of other discussions that bring us to this today with an RFP.
Yep, last month, our team presented information from our Fairfax visit. We went to Fairfax County Schools to review their process for adjusting school start times, if you remember, if you recall that from last month. At the end of our discussion, we talked about a number of different options of moving forward. Our team committed to bringing back information for a draft scope of work that we put together for an RFP. So this evening, Dr. James will briefly review a few of the key points involved with that RFP. I'll let Dr. James talk through those.
Thank you, Dr. Shandor. After our visit to Fairfax County Public Schools and talking with that staff, we thought an initial step would be less sort of model there approach, but look at what would be effective for us and what we need to hear in York County. So with that, we think the first thing we need to do is get an understanding of our adolescent sleep patterns. Once all the information about that, and then have that guide our work as we develop a work plan before we should go after that. So you see here before you some considerations for defining the scope of work for an RFP. And the first one would be to get a consultant to actually conduct an analysis of current medical research and the latest literature regarding, first of all, the adolescent biology, circadian rhythms, impact of sleep loss on academic and athletic performance, on a teenager's mood and health, driving safety, and of course, work productivity. And then with that information, we also would like this consultant to review and catalog case studies pertaining to later high school start times as well as develop research-based responses to the myths and perhaps public perceptions related to school start times. And once all that work done, then we think the next thing to do would be to develop a stakeholder engagement plan. And by stakeholders, we're talking about staff, community members, parents, all of us involved in education in York County to get a true understanding about what's concerned with adolescent sleep patterns. And then, of course, having educational materials available for staff and even on the division website so that information is readily accessible to the public, as well as holding informational sessions for, of course, school board members, all of you, central office staff, school-based staff, parents, and community members. And once that done, to then actually go out to the community and hold 10 informational sessions or focus groups, two at each school zone. And then, of course, as well as sessions for school board members and the central office staff. Then once all that work is done and we present that information, and then to develop a timeline within the RFP for completing the scope of work within the RFP, so we know how much time that takes to gauge our work later on. So that's where we are now, is an initial draft of what we would do concerning the RFP to get a consultant to come in to actually research and provide information with the groups I mentioned about adolescent sleep patterns.
So the RFP product numbers, basically, you would put something through county purchasing, follow the same protocols as any RFP would, hits the street, and then we get proposals like what it's going to cost, what companies are out there to do this kind of stuff.
Yeah, correct.
But we would have to develop a more detailed packet, I guess.
We are, right.
Oh, absolutely.
So we wanted to bring just a brief sketch of our thoughts, and then we wanted to get some feedback from you all this morning. We've been here for a while, not quite this morning. This evening, regarding our plan moving forward, we talked about how important it was to educate all of our constituents, educate ourselves as well. So, you know, what are some of your preliminary thoughts regarding the six or seven bullets up there?
Cost?
I think you're on target. Our cost is going to be something I'm really interested to see what this is going to come back with.
This is a smaller scale than what Fairfax did? So do you have any kind of ballpark figure of cost?
On this point, I don't. But I know Fairfax started with one number, and when the proposals came back, they increased the number because the proposal was much higher than what they thought it would be.
This was, we just had a report on where we were with the school charges and so forth. This would probably come around the same time, 17, 18. So we're looking at, I'm going to guess, two significant activities that will be hitting the budget, and this is not in the budget.
But this is for operating, not capital improvement?
That was my question. This wouldn't be a CIP expense, this would have to come from our operating budget.
Okay, okay.
So we'd have to find the dollars, whatever it came in at. So we'd have to find the dollars, whatever it came in at.
I would like to explore this. I think it's most important for the health and mental well-being of our students as far as schedule for all students K through 12.
The initial step is to put together the RFP.
Yes.
How much staff time, staff work do you foresee doing that? And any idea how long it would take to, to do that?
I'll have to defer to Carl.
You know, one of the first steps would be is to meet with county purchasing about that process and make sure that we include all the components that we require, as well as look at what was in the Fairfax RFP, 'cause each agent would have their own set of rules to actually see that, and then actually to define in more detail exactly what we expect them to do, because that's gonna drive the cost piece. If you expect them to do 10 presentations over multiple days.
Yes.
Then, of course, that staff time and preparing all those documents and all that is gonna have to be taken into consideration, 'cause that's gonna drive the cost. After they do the research and develop a team to actually do all of that research. I know there's a lot of information out there available, but we want to know what's now and what's the latest research, and then that can, then guide our work. So it's gonna be quite a long process. If I had to guess without any basis for a guess, that could be about a six-month process from the time you actually start the RFP to actually get your proposal in, and then you actually complete that process, and then you know where you're going, and that's just a guess.
So what we need to know is how much money we need to spend to find out how much money we need to spend. Basically, so we've gotta start somewhere. I, I gotta tell you, I think we need to prioritize things, I mean, after, the overcrowding concerns me, we've got a lot of issues coming up, a lot of things that we're gonna need to, to really look and see how we place priority on certain things, but I think, you know, we, we need to move forward looking at this, but I really would like to know what things are gonna cost, I mean, what's the first step gonna cost us, that, that's all. And I think that's the way we've always.
And I think that's gonna be really hard for us to predict, because our, what we're asking this group or whoever to come in to provide to us is, is not the same as what Fairfax did. So they're not gonna lead our work plans, so to speak, they're not gonna assemble our, our focus groups or a stakeholder team or whatever our plan is moving forward. Step number one is to educate our community, so figuring out what that cost is, is our first step, and I, I, I don't think any of us have an idea of what that amount would be.
Would it be safe to say that, might be appropriate to say, okay, over the next two or three months, start beginning conversations with the county purchasing agent to put together something that could bring us a cost estimate, 'cause once the proposals start coming in, but is there any cost to do that part, except staff time?
This would be like what we did for the teacher pay scale.
Yes. It's not like what we do, when we did RFP for food service, you know, that took a number of months to actually do that, but of course, in that regard, you had to work with DOE as well as school staff and county staff, but it is a process.
But my next question is, this process of doing the paperwork to put it before county staff, is it gonna slow down getting these modulators straight or, you know, going out to get McGruder and Yorktown shored up for the short term, but the growth or all these other distractors that are floating around out there, we're getting ready to roll into, you know, FY '17 here and a budget, can this still be done, not like tomorrow, but over the next two or three months?
Are we talking about the same staff who does it all?
Yes, you are.
You?
So I guess what I'm asking, if we're gonna throw something else. His team is in here, the two of them who lead that work are sitting in here, yes.
Well, Mr. Shearhardt would be more involved with the capital improvement.
Oh, no, it's Dr. Jones, sorry.
Right, but, but, I mean, Mr. Shearhardt is involved with the CIP.
Right.
I, I'm concerned about throwing something else at staff, but I understand that until we see a number here of, of what this is gonna cost, it's really hard to go, you know, to be informed, to make a decision.
Can I ask a, a point? You corrected me a moment ago to say the new school would be CIP, and this would be operating budget. Once we build the school, you gotta fill it, you gotta fill it with teachers. That's operating, is that not? So that, the new school still impacts your operating budget?
Yes.
So, okay. Just wanna make sure that we don't walk away saying everything with the new school is CIP, it's not.
Right, but that's not going to be in FY '17, we're not going to place teachers in a new school that hasn't been built yet.
Mr. Metford.
Yeah, Dr. James, help me with my question here. When you sent out an RFP, you would be asking companies for references in those RFPs to say what are similar school divisions in size that you've done with the same request? That would be part of it?
Yes.
Okay.
So you'd wanna look at that background and the kind of work they've done, so you use that as the way you go in to actually select the RFP about their experience? And this particular one, I don't know how many people are out there that does this kind of work, and I'm just, don't know, there's something we have to investigate to see who the potential offerers could be for this RFP.
We had done a similar thing at New Horizons, looking at the future of career and technical education for the group, and I was a little skeptical, but I was very impressed with the information that come back and came up with a pretty good team, I thought. And I was concerned that maybe you were gonna have to spend the time to find different RFPs around, but hopefully these companies will supply you with enough that you'll be able to make reference.
You know, you're talking about part of the work, identifying who the potential offerers or vendors could be for this RFP, and that's why it's important to look at what's happening in other areas to actually know who's available to actually provide the kind of service that we need here within the school division. You know, that's gonna be part of this process, determining who those offers should be.
Well, based on that, I'm in scope, Paige, I'm sorry.
I think the thing that concerns me most, that this has just come to the forefront in the last couple of years or three years, if this division's out there with a long enough track record, you know, somewhere we're seeing that, just like where you went the first year they're going into.
Yes.
Okay. Would it be appropriate, based on conversations from board members, everybody seems to be focused on cost of the next step, to take the necessary time without stressing your staff with these other things going on, but to still put together something at some point that would be an RFP request on the street, the county purchasing, that would bring us some actual proposed cost to the next step after that, and then we can come back and bring it to the table and revisit it?
What timeline are you thinking?
I think two or three months, probably.
Having given that particular piece of a lot of time, I'd first need to engage the purchasing department and see what resources they have available as far as identifying who the offerers are and other RFPs out there, because we work together throughout this country about RFPs and those kind of processes, you know, people will share, but yeah, I just need to find out who they are out there and make sure.
Then if you want to just leave that open, then you, y'all come back with us a later time to let us know how much time you need to do this correctly to, through the county purchasing then, because I hate to say, let's get it done in two or three months, and it turns out to be four or five months.
I think your consideration's on the right path, if you, if I would.
I like what you, you presented to us about the scope of the work.
Everybody okay with that? This kind of, this open timeline for you to do what needs to be.
Yeah, if I may, we do the same, we have, we needed to agree, we need to, not got any corners, so.
But the next step would be, before anything is done, when the RFP's come back, have a cost, a call.
Yes. We can get that next time, I guess, okay.
All right, I have one more item, if that's all right, I know it's late.
It's fine.
If I could have Mr. Jarrett make some closing comments on the capital improvement.
Yeah, thank you, Dr. Shandor, I just wanna make sure that the public, viewing public is aware of our CIP process that we are involved in. You heard tonight the FMP, Facilities Masters Plan. Now, our next step is, and staff has been working on that diligently all day today and will be working on it all day tomorrow, the Capital Improvements Program booklet. Now, you have a public hearing scheduled for this school board meeting coming up on November the 23rd, that will be on the CIP. We hope to get that published Wednesday of this week, that will be on the school board website, we'll also have copies in the library for the public to review. Then after that, on December the 7th, you'll be having another work session, and that work session will focus on the CIP. And the CIP then, you, if you have any changes or any comments that you wanna reflect on as a part of the public hearing, we'll talk about those at that time. Any changes will be incorporated for then when you, at your December meeting, you will be approving a CIP to forward to the Board of Supervisors for their consideration during the budget process. And keep in mind, their budget process will go on all the way up through the first week of May, but it's important that we get our side of the CIP to them in December for planning purposes. And so that's kind of where we are with the Capital Improvements Program, so that will be published this week, and you'll have a public, public hearing on that later this month. So anyone in the public that would like to come out, speak on that, would be welcome to do so.
Thank you, Mr. Jarrett.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, any other questions? Well, then, we're adjourned. Good night, everyone.
All right. Good night.